All right, it's 5:30. I will call this regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls to order. If you'd all like to join me with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. We do have one addition. It is an additional claim for the city. It is going to be under the accounts payable. It's an additional City International Falls claim for CARES funding, $38,925. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we'll go to the approval of the minutes of our October 19th city council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have the payments of claim and the approval of the accounts payable. We have transfers from the general fund going to the lodging tax fund of $366.54. Accounts payable, we have airport claims. It is blanket authorization for Resolution 8320 The City of International Falls regular claims of $445,322.7. The additional International Falls CARES funding claim of $38,925. Airport commission claims of $94,562.4. Airport reconstruction project phase two, $827,940.16. And runway reconstruction project phase three claims of $175,767.80. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution, the transfers in the accounts payable.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Buller. City Administrator, do you want to discuss that CARES funding?
Mayor, there's, as you pointed out, an increase of $38,925 for this claim. It's intended to fund the Civic Systems Module. Currently, our financial software program is provided by Civic Systems. And one of the features of the software program is a building permit software program. And so we're suggesting we acquire that building permit software, which will allow the public to access the system remotely, pay for building permits, and also make application remotely online through this particular module. So there's a portion of it for building permit software, and then there's an annual support fee of $4,325. So that's included in this $38,925. And the council had visited about this recently at a committee of the whole meeting and was recommending moving forward because of the features that it offers. Again, it's preventing the public from having to come into a public assembly area, and it does justify the expense of CARES Act monies for that reason.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the city administrator regarding accounts payable buildings or accounts payable and transfers? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we'll go to audience for open forum for anything that is not on the agenda. Hearing none, you also have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to bring something up. Next, we have a public hearing for opening bids. We have to remove from the table the consider of three quotes for replacement of the two heating units at South Falls Fire Station payable from the fire department budget. At this time, I would accept a motion to remove from the table.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. This is just to remove the action from the table. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. So now it is lawfully before us. We have a quote. We have three quotes for the heating system over at South Falls Fire Hall. Complete Comfort Systems, $4,142. Rainy Lake Heating and Cooling, $4,375.38. And Shannon's, $5,590. Chief Manasa, would you like to discuss these?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as stated, the values are in front of you for the three different vendors. The only comment I guess I would like to make is not being a furnace guy, but judging by the quotes, it does look like we have comparable bids or comparable products. They're obviously different brands, but they do look to be comparable to me. The only thing I would like to make a note of is on the Rainy Lake Heating and Cooling bid, if you look at the quote turned in, the value was $4,225.38, and I have listed $4,375.38. It does not change where it's at in comparison. The reason I did that is that did not include a lift rental of $150. So I added the $150 for lift rental. Other than that, I believe the quotes are comparable.
Okay, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to accept one of the quotes.
Question before we move on.
Please, please.
I'm not familiar with Comfort Systems, Complete Comfort Systems. Is that a local?
It is. Complete Comfort Systems was, I'm gonna say, a buyout, in lack of a better term, for Fletcher Heating and Air.
Okay.
So that was the former Fletcher Heating and Air, different owner.
All right.
Does anyone else have any questions for the chief before he goes and sits? All right. So the chair would entertain a motion to purchase one of the heating systems.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the low bid from Complete Comfort Systems, $4,142.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept the low bid. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Next, we have another item to remove from the table. The Friends Garbage Service application for year 2021, garbage hauler's license. First thing we need to do is remove it from the table. The chair would entertain a motion to-
Make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Deitch. We have a second by Councilor Briggs. And again, this is just to get it off the table. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. As you guys remember, Councilor Deitch had some concerns about the garbage hauler's license, and all through myself, Councilor Deitch, and the city administrator did meet along with the city attorney and Friends Garbage. And I think we have a pretty good understanding of how we're gonna go move forward. I would hand it over to Councilor Deitch at this point for a little bit more information.
I believe you nailed it on the head there. The city attorney was also present, and he drew up basically a contract saying when and what will be done at a certain time. And I think everything's gonna roll along fine. I think this is the right thing to do.
Okay. So with that being said, the chair would entertain a motion to provide the garbage hauler's license for 2021.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deitch.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? I would just say that it was a very good mutual conversation. Friends Garbage understood the concerns that we had, and we understood the concerns that they're having. And they're having the same concerns as a lot of the businesses in the community. They're having a hard time retaining staff. They're having a hard time keeping up with, well, everything right now. But they were 100% open to the conversation that we were having, and they understood our concerns. And I think that they are gonna be alleviated, so.
Agreed.
With that being said, I will call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have a consent agenda to approve 2021 license renewals. On the list today is DNS Pizza Incorporated, doing business as Domino's Pizza, restaurant license; Curb Appeal Lawn Care, a snowplow license; Icebox Investments LLC, doing business as Dairy Queen International Falls, a restaurant license; Jim's Disposal Service, a garbage hauler's license. Ooh, that's a tough one. Kleinfelter Synergy LLC, doing business as McDonald's International Falls, restaurant license; KNV Restaurants Incorporated, doing business as Subway IF, a restaurant license; Sand East Place LLC, a restaurant license; and Sarah Neville Inan, a massage individual license. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to the mayoral proclamation. This is an observation of the National Family Caregivers Month of November 2020. Chair would entertain a motion for that proclamation.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have the request approval for 2021 license renewals that may include tobacco or liquor applications. We have Apple Green Midwest, doing business as Express Lane 2325, a cigarette license; fireworks license, 3-2 off-sale license; gasoline pumps license, and a restaurant license. Apple Green Midwest, doing business as Express Lane 2327, a 3-2 off-sale license; cigarette license; gasoline pumps license, and a restaurant license. Border Oil Company Incorporated, doing business as The Jug Liquors, a cigarette license; an off-sale liquor license; Citizens for Bacchus AB, a restaurant license; a wine on-sale license; a 3-2 on-sale restaurant and bar license; Miners Incorporated, doing business as County Market Foods, a 3-2 off-sale license; a cigarette license; gasoline pumps license, and a restaurant license; Super One Foods, a cigarette license; a restaurant license, and a 3-2 sale license; and Super One Liquor LLC, doing business as County Market Liquor, a cigarette license; an off-sale liquor license, yeah, and an off-sale liquor license. Chair would entertain a motion to those renewals.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? All right. With no discussion, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have a planning commission recommendation to adopt resolution approving a conditional use permit for fuel storage and distribution for Keep Properties LLC. City Administrator, you want to give us some background?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, counsel. An application was submitted by Larry Keep of Keep Properties, the eighth LLC, as you pointed out. Mr. Keep is interested in developing a site at the intersection or corner of Highway 155 and 15th Street. And the proposal is to, or I'm sorry, 332. And the proposal is to install some bulk fuel storage tanks. This particular use in the zoning district in which it's located requires a conditional use permit. So the planning commission had held a public hearing on Tuesday, October 27th. Heard any public comments. There wasn't any. And so Mr. Keep is here to represent his interests. But the planning commission is recommending that the conditional use permit be approved by the city council, and is subject to meeting all the requirements of the state building code, the state of Minnesota agency requirements for this type of facility, and the International Falls Code of Ordinances. The, it does indicate that if the property ownership or title is transferred to another owner, the conditional use permit shall expire and terminate effectively upon the transfer. So the recommendation was to approve the conditional use permit with those conditions of approval.
All right. We have a motion to accept from Councilor Briggs.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Mr. Keep, do you want to speak on behalf of the project? No? All right.
I was already getting bored, so.
All right.
I'm getting bored.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to the approval, approved closure of the city demolition debris facility. Authorize staff to notify the MPCA and direct staff to perform all necessary steps to complete the closure. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Public Works Director Brokaw, would you like to come and give a little background on this? Make sure you grab the microphone. And that it's on.
In 2014, the City of International Falls applied to, or tried to renew their permit for the demo site. January of 2018, we got a letter from the MPCA saying they finally got to our permit, and it was incomplete. We started out, 2019, meeting with the MPCA to see what was missing in our 2014 report, or permit. But basically, what it's coming down to is we're getting to a point where they're requiring us to do a hydrology study, which is going to involve doing boring holes to determine where the groundwater is. The issue with that is, I was kinda hoping to be able to do the hydrology study to see if we were gonna re- Part of the hydrology study is to see if you're gonna have to have permanent monitoring wells. I was kinda hoping to get to the point where we could see if we were not gonna be required to do monitoring wells. But the problem is, once you do the hydrology study, you drill the holes, even before you get the permit, once you do that study, if it deems that you need to put monitoring wells in there, even if you do not decide to move ahead with your permit, you're gonna be required to monitor them wells for a minimum of 20 years. And the problem with that is, right now, it's $10,000 to $12,000 a year to test those. We're required to have a minimum of five feet of clay from the bottom of our demo to the groundwater. The MPCA, we'd recommend doing five wells, 10 feet, from the bottom of the debris into the clay to see if we could find groundwater. The MPCA is asking for nine bores and ask us to go 20 feet. Basically, they've told us that we're gonna end up with monitoring wells. They've indicated that they feel that we have the county demo site too close to our demo site, so we do have other options. The problem is, we've spent so much money to get to this point. And one of the things that the MPCA is leaning towards is, your permit's good for 10 years. They're saying that demo sites in Minnesota within the next 10 years are gonna be required to be lined. So even if we get a permit, the end of our next 10 years, we're either gonna have to close it or we're gonna have to dig it up and line it. It's getting to the point where we just can't afford to have it. If we do the hydrology study, they ask us to do monitoring wells, even if we decide not to move ahead with the permit, we're gonna have to pay to monitor them wells for a minimum of 20 years. The county has went through three permits, or they've done two permits. Those were rejected. They're on their third one. They've found a letter from the MPCA from, I don't know how far back, that says they'll never be required to put monitoring wells. So the MPCA is not requiring them to put monitoring wells. We're gonna end up getting stuck with monitoring wells. And I'm worried if we continue on with the hydrology study, we're gonna, it's getting too expensive. And the idea of lining it, I know we're gonna price ourselves out of that. It's just something we can't afford to have. The long-term financial ramifications are too great.
So then, I guess my first follow-up question would be, what's the ramifications for us closing the monitor wells? I mean, what's the, or I'm sorry, closing the demo site? If we close that, what costs are we gonna be incurring by putting stuff at the county?
Well, I think last time it was $130 a load for the demo. You know, so that would be an added cost. I mean, right now, we've spent about $22,000 this year on professional services with this permit. Our demo budget's $12,000 a year. You know, it's getting to the point where we can't afford it. We can't afford to maintain our own demo site. But there will be an added cost for, you know, you figure it's 12 to 15 loads for a two-bedroom, single-family home. So.
So that, go please.
Ted, you say that, so it's $12,000 a year just to monitor, is it all the wells, or is that per well?
That, it's an approximate, you know, they give me a price, $9,000 to $12,000.
So if you shot it at 12, and it's $130 a load, that's 92 loads to the county. Would cover the cost of that, I mean, if you look at it that way. And that's certainly something that we could, I mean, we're the ones that are doing it, right? So that's certainly something that we could pass that on to the, right? But I mean, it would, your 92 loads, whether you use them or not, that's what you're paying for by just having the monitoring.
But then if you got into the point where we had to line it, you're probably talking a half a million dollars.
Well, I mean, I think lining is totally out of the realm of what we can afford. And that's, that's, that's the issue is, I was hoping to be able to do the hydrology study to see if we're gonna have to have monitoring wells, but they keep saying, once you make this step, you can't go back. So we're gonna get stuck with monitoring wells, especially with them almost doubling the amount of bores that they want us to do, plus having us go 20 feet. Part of me thinks that they don't have enough wells to monitor the closed landfill that's there. I think they wanna use our wells to see what's going on with that landfill. It has not been a fun experience. The MPCA does not tell you what they want. They try and steer you in the right direction, and I'm kind of a straight shooter. You know, just to try and figure out, well, five wells or five bores aren't enough. Well, when you're meeting on a Zoom or on a conference call with seven people from the MPCA, I'm paying two environmental engineers, and they're sitting, well, five's not enough. Finally, I said, you know, after 45-minute conversation, tell us how many bores we're gonna have to do to make you happy. They will not give you that number. Finally, we threw six, seven, and they were fine with nine. And I don't know what that cost with my engineers and the MPCA to get to that point.
So, any other questions for? So ultimately, the ramifications is there's gonna be some changes that we're gonna have to make to our home demo policy.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's something we're gonna have to look at through this winter. Does anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, I will call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Don't go anywhere, Ted. Next one might be you, too. Consider demo application for, from Jana Ref for a manufactured home, 1708 Avenue, number two. Chief Manasa, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess quite frankly, I didn't know what to do with this other than to bring it to council. Our demo policy talks about homesteaded and non-homesteaded. This particular property is a mobile home that is owned by Jana Ref. It is placed in a mobile home park owned by Jeff Housman. When you look on the parcel info, the homesteading status just says manufactured home park. So I don't know if it's homestead or non-homesteaded. I would assume none. Neither here nor there, I guess, at this point. But the problem we run into is trailer houses are sometimes considered real property with titles and whatnot. So Jana owns the mobile home, and Mr. Housman owns the property it's on. The mobile home is very much dilapidated, beyond repair of any kind. I don't think it's in a state of, I don't think we can slap wheels and axles under it and move it without it falling apart. It's an onsite demo. And the problem we're at is Ms. Ref, to the best of my knowledge, has walked away from the trailer after turning in the demo application. Mr. Housman has a representative working for him named Richard Gaines as the property manager. So Rich Gaines is also working on this from his aspect of trying to clean up the property. So, again, I guess I don't really know where to go. This is a unique one.
Okay. Counsel's thoughts? Please.
I guess I'm against demoing the trailer house. We turned on two other trailer houses roughly two months ago, and this was on private property also, although this is a rental on top of private property, if you wanna call it that. I think that the landlord and the owner of the trailer should get together and take care of themselves. We talked about trailers are something we'd wanna deal with. The owner should take care of those. I'm against any demo.
Okay. Any other conversation?
I have to agree. Both properties are non-homestead properties. So this one's no different than the two we already turned on, in my mind.
Yeah, it says on the tax statement, there's no homesteaded, but so.
So then the chair would accept a motion to deny, it sounds like.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to deny from Councilor Deitch. We have a second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll notify the parties.
Next, we have to, we have a unbudgeted payment of $2,000 to Soil and Water Conservation District for a geotechnical engineering service to conduct Rainy Lake, or I'm sorry, Rainy River Slope Stability, payable from Engineering Department Professional Services. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for some background information, there's roughly six or eight properties that show signs of unstable slopes along the Rainy River and fronting on Shorewood Drive. And so this has been brought to the Soil and Water Conservation District's attention quite some time ago, about a year ago. They had a meeting this past spring with the Corps of Engineers officials present, and they viewed the site, prepared some information. And so I became aware of it through the emergency management coordinator for the county. I've gone out, I've taken photos of three or four of the sites. I'm actually alarmed with how it's giving way. I'm actually alarmed with how it's giving way. And just over the last couple of years, when some of these properties have been in existence for three decades and have had no problem. So I think the value of having an engineering study to try and evaluate the stability of those slopes and what's causing the problem is a worthwhile effort. And I've been communicating with Pam Tomavee from the Soil and Water Conservation District. Their board is meeting tonight. They're entertaining the proposals of two different engineering firms to appoint one to move forward with this effort. In my conversations with her, I indicated I think it would be fruitful to try and get the engineering analysis, and they're actually going to do soil borings and some other studies this fall before the ground freezes and we get to next spring, and at least have the winter to try and do the analysis and prepare a report and come up with a plan of action to try and address it. Because the problem time periods are generally in the spring where you have a lot of snow melt, a lot of spring precipitation, the water levels in the river are going to fluctuate more dramatically, and so I think it's worthwhile to do this study. So she said that this is a little bit outside of the realm of the Soil and Water Conservation District, and they're going to be applying to TSA 8 for some funds from their boards to offer support. But she said anything from a local government perspective to assist would really be helpful to try and leverage some of these additional funds. So they did make a request of the county. I'm not sure what Koochichin County is going to do, but I'm recommending that the city council appropriate $2,000 out of the engineering budget under our professional services line item to contribute to this cause. And the estimated costs are going to be at or above $20,000. And so this is a minimal portion of the total cost. So I'm recommending we move forward with this and contribute the monies to the Soil and Water Conservation District so the study can go forward.
Okay. So Chair would entertain a motion?
I think Joe's got one also.
I guess my question, before we do anything, this is private property, right?
It is.
So this is somebody's, this is somebody's home, somebody's private property, that they own property on the river, and the river is taking their shoreline away, correct?
I don't know that that's entirely certain.
I mean, I own 3,000 feet on the Ash River, and it's doing it all the time. So I guess my question is, I mean, so we're doing a study right now, or looking to do a study to shore up somebody's yard?
Well, as I said, it's a prevalent problem across the whole frontage on Rainy River. There's properties east of the shoreline or Shorewood Landing, as well as west, almost around to the corner. So I think that there's a lot of question. I don't think that the cause of the problem is from the fluctuating river levels. I think it's more from the slope stability and what's happening near the built environment up at the top of the slopes that's causing some of this slough and give way. There is one property, and I failed to bring pictures, but it's five feet from a sidewalk that's immediately next to a house. And they've already brought a private party in to bring what was reported to me, 40 truckloads of fill, and that fill is also sloughed. And full-size birch trees and stuff are giving way. So I just think that it's a common problem. This is just a means to get the study and the engineering analysis done so that eight different property owners don't have to go through the same exercise. I don't think that the city should be a party, or a public entity should be a party to providing the fix for those, but I think trying to analyze it on behalf of all of our, the constituents that are affected makes sense.
And I would note that I'm comfortable with $2,000, but I mean, when it comes to fixing it, it's private property. It would be, in my opinion, it would be the property owner's responsibility to shore up their property, just like anybody else that owns waterfront property would have to do.
Right. Basically, Joe had what I was going to talk about also. I have no problem with giving the $2,000 to have this study. I would make sure that we don't set a precedent that somebody farther down the river says, oh, mine's wearing away also in two, five years, whatever it may be. It's the property owner's responsibility. The study, I'll go along with, as long as we don't have any long-term effects that's going to affect our budget.
I had to fix my own shoreline.
Right.
And in the hospital, we're dealing with it right now. We've spent a lot of money trying to deal with getting our riverbank fixed, and it's up in the, you know.
Yeah, I know. The DNR is constantly saying you've got to do this, that, and the other, and that's what happens when you own property that's got water on it.
At the hospital, we had to pay for everything, the engineering study and everything.
Yeah, I don't have a problem paying for the engineering study, but when it comes time for the fix, that's assessed, or they're going to have to fix it.
Okay, so we have, we've had good discussion. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the $2,000 to Soil and Water Conservation District?
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Kraus. We have a second?
A little second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I think in this motion, we should have that we're going to also write a letter to them that this is what we talked about, that will help with the engineering, that we don't need part of anything else from here on, we'll just take care of that, and I think that'd be, and I think a letter, even a letter to them, because they said that they've been looking for grants and so on and so forth, but even a letter that says to the city council that we are backing this project, and that's why we're giving it, that will probably help them on some grants that they're writing.
So basically, just requesting a letter of support with the project, but also limiting to our capacity is just with the engineering.
That way it'll be clear to them what we're doing.
Okay. The motion maker, okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Second?
I did a second.
Oh, second, Deitch?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, resolution summarizing the findings and confirming use of the CARES Act funding for public health emergency purposes. This is quite the spreadsheet here, Ken.
Well, it is, Mayor, and we've identified a number of different activities to be funded with these monies. And so as you may recall, the CARES Act funds were monies that were distributed from the federal government to the state. The governor appropriated money to various local units of government based on a formula. We were awarded $462,439 for CARES funds. There were two other funding sources, one of them being the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services that provided some stimulus monies for the ambulance in the amount of just over $36,000, and then another $10,000 from another funding source. And we've identified all the uses for those monies. You can see that the total is about, what you have in your spreadsheet actually was updated today by staff. And I have one spreadsheet that shows the total costs remaining of $6,151.38 from the COVID relief monies. We've been carefully watching the guidance coming out of the federal government, U.S. Department of Treasury, as well as the Minnesota Management and Budget. Many local units of government have contributed monies to their business community because of the closures that were mandated by the governor's executive order. And so we've, I don't remember the dollar amount, but the joint committee that's been working with all the municipalities in the county, and Koochichin County has awarded monies to business applicants to try and assist with COVID-related expenses they've incurred. So because of the minimal amount that's left, staff is suggesting that the council consider making an appropriation of $500 for seven of our local businesses that have on-sale liquor licenses that were required to close and had no retail income for a period of time. That would bring the appropriation to $3,500 for those, total for those seven businesses. And we'd have roughly a $2,651.38 balance left, and we have some payroll-related expenses that can be paid between now and November 15. So I'm requesting that the city council adopt the resolution that we drafted for the agenda, acknowledging the expenditure of these monies for these purposes, with the additional authorization to spend the $3,500 for $500 for each of our businesses that have on-sale liquor licenses to compensate them for their lost revenues and the expenses that they incurred to put protective measures in place for when they did reopen.
Okay. So Chair would entertain the motion to adopt the resolution in adding the $3,500 for the refunding of a portion of their liquor license for businesses that were closed?
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Counselors Fuller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Ken, do we have any other business come before the council for new business? Don't believe so.
No, Mayor, I'm not aware of any.
All right, so we'll go to the reports of boards, committees, department heads. City Administrator.
Just a reminder that next Monday at 4 o'clock, we'll have a committee of the whole meeting. I also want to, and I know that nobody's aware of this, but tomorrow there is.
That's tomorrow?
Yeah. So I want to wish everybody, all the candidates, good luck, and I do want to encourage everybody who have not voted by mail or other means to, they're more than welcome to attend any one of our three polling places and vote tomorrow. We strongly encourage that. So I don't have anything else I want to add, unless there's any questions of me.
City Administrator, we were just having a discussion as we were sitting down here today. It does not sound like we're going to be able to have a quorum for the committee of the whole meeting on Monday, but we'd still like to have that meeting. Would it be possible to move it on a Tuesday or another day? It seems Brian will be at the airport, I will be flying into the airport, and Joe apparently wants to go hunting.
On Tuesday, the 10th of November, there is a Public Works Committee meeting scheduled for 2:30. I think if we met at 4 o'clock, which is the normal time for the committee of the whole, that would be sufficient time, but.
That works for?
Yeah, I don't know if it's going to be 2:30. See, they always move to 2:30 from 1 o'clock to 2:30, because Ted is always meeting with 53 Project at 1 o'clock.
Yeah, that's true, and they're.
It's changed now, so that, I'm thinking we should ask Ted, but he's not here right now, but we could, I think, I think we change it back to 1 o'clock.
But if we do the committee of the whole meeting at?
Four.
At four, that's fine, and we'll figure out what we're going to do for the public works.
Yeah, we'll work about that later.
Tuesday, the 10th?
Yeah. Does that work for you?
And I, Mayor, I should just probably advise the council that there's three groups that wanted to address the committee of the whole on that date, so I think they had made previous arrangements to make sure that they could have people attend. I will notify them first thing tomorrow morning that you're proposing to change the date, and hopefully they can get enough people to attend.
Okay. All right.
What was the date on that?
Tuesday.
11th?
November 10th.
10th.
Tuesday. Wednesday is Veterans Day, and that's also a city holiday.
I got you.
That's a holiday.
All right, city attorney.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
I can.
Okay. With regard to the criminal cases on blight, nothing has taken place significantly since the last meeting, but we do have court tomorrow, district court with a visiting judge, and six of our criminal cases for blight are on the calendar for tomorrow, so hopefully we'll be getting some updates and some progress. There is one of those cases, I just got a call from a daughter of the property owner who said she'd been up here in the last week or so cleaning things up, and had sent some pictures, and I asked her to get in contact with Chief Manasseh. I don't know if that has been able to occur yet, but hopefully we've got at least that one that's being cleaned up. But it's been a real slow process, and discouraging, actually, with no local judge that it takes so long to get into court, and pretty soon it's going to, everything's going to be covered by snow, and that'll make it even harder. But that's the current status. There is some progress we've been trying to make with some blighted buildings with regard to their repair, and discussions have been going on with regard to that. But we may, it sounds like with this change in the demo site, we may want to revisit our demolition policy before we go forward with any more of those agreements.
Agreed.
That's all I have.
When does Judge Schamone take the bench?
Well, I think he's going to get sworn in shortly after the first of the year, and then he's got a couple of weeks of training, so he'll be here, I think, starting cases probably the third week in January, although it'll be a conflict of interest for him to have any of my cases. So for all my cases, they're going to have to continue to bring in judges from outside the area. So for the next year until I retire, it's going to be a nuisance for court administration.
That's good. All right, go to department heads. Chief Manasseh, do you have anything?
The only thing I comment on is Mr. Schamone's track. I got contacted by two individuals about 4:30 this afternoon, so I was able to take a look at one piece property. I've got dark, so I'll take care of the other one in the morning, and I'll come back and Mr. Schamone.
Sounds good, thank you. Reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. The only thing that I had on there is the committee of hold needed to be rescheduled. Any other council committees?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did want to note that last Monday, I did attend the Rainy River Community College relicensing the public portion at 5 o'clock, and that seemed to be well attended by the public. And I think all of the questions of the board were answered by Mr. Crassaway and others. So that was a really informative meeting, and I'm really glad that I was able to represent the city in that meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, audience, anybody from the audience have anything to bring forward? Please.
Hi, I'm Mike Bar. So I was just wondering, like, Smokey Bear has the Corona mask on. Like, I thought this was like a tourist town, you know, people coming in from out of town, maybe they couldn't cross the border, and they get to go visit Smokey Bear with his mask on. I think it's a little disgraceful myself. I think it's time to take the mask off enough with it. Because like, I'm driving the, you know, the bus there, and I watch some, you know, happy family, you know, coming up there, taking a picture with smoking his silly Corona mask, you know, let's get him like a tie or something, you know, red, white, and blue, anything. Put mitts on early, just enough with the mask already. That's just my thought. And then the other thing, you guys keep, you know, getting upset with friends and everything. I mean, you know, somebody gave them the authorization to be there. I just, leave them alone, you know, like, the money that y'all spent planting trees this late in the year, that half of them are dead, and later on, you're going to have to go and cut those trees back like you are on my side of town over there in First Ave West. You know, maybe you could have spent that money, built them a nice fence, out of sight, out of mind. Just my two thoughts, for what it's worth. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, in correspondence, in your packets, you have the Visitors and Convention Bureau financial information, September 2020, and the International Falls Koochichin County Airport Commission meeting information. Just a quick note on the Airport Commission. I did bring up at the meeting about utilizing the CARES Act funding, and it sounds like myself and Ken Brad will be working with some at the county and KIRA to see if we can't utilize some of that funding. SEH is putting together a funding analysis to show what we can use those funds for and what we can't, and what benefits both the city and the county the most on how to use the funding first, second, third. And then we can finalize our 2020 budget moving forward. But I just wanted to give an update that we are going to be looking at that, and we are getting a little bit of information from SEH. With that being said, the city administrator did say that there's an election tomorrow, I guess. That polls open at 7 o'clock in the morning, and they run until 8 p.m. guess. That polls open at 7:00 in the morning, and they run until 8:00 p.m. We have, we're closed for Veterans Day, November 11th, 2020. And we have a special city council meeting for the canvassing, and that's going to be November 12th at 4:00 p.m. And then our next regular city council meeting is November 16th. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.